It is seven o'clock and it is Tuesday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty. This is the meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville and we're meeting via Zoom tonight. There likely appears maybe some people in the council chambers too, at least two or three people. And I will ask shortly if there's anybody there that wants to talk, but we will start with roll calls. So I believe Colette, that's you.
Okay, Dust?
Yes.
Killian?
Yeah.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Hop?
She's on mute.
Sorry.
Okay, and Art?
Yes.
Moving along, the first thing on our agenda tonight is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single vote. You want something removed, please let me know. First would be council minutes from eight twenty-five, two thousand and twenty, a regular meeting. Second, payment of bills. Third, the financial report for August. Fourth, appointments to boards and commissions. And Ben? Ben has resigned from the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Committee almost before he started. Fire department, I believe. Is that correct, Ben? And I see Ryan and Ben both shaking their head, yes, so their meetings conflict. Tonight I'm appointing Cindy Tang, the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Committee, in the position that Ben had been appointed to a couple of months ago. Okay, licenses, the one and two-year operator licenses to sell alcohol were in your package. And there are two street closing permits. One is for Hickory Street between Pine and Greenwood for Saint Augie's University Parish Annual Pioneer Catholic Block Party, which is scheduled actually for tomorrow night, Wednesday, from four to eight. The second is also for the same area of the street, Hickory Street between Pine and Greenwood, for the Saint Augustine University Parish Newman Olympics and Friday, September eighteenth, from two P M to eight. Do I hear any emotions?
I move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of F. One, which is the block party.
With the F one. Motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of F one, the block party that's scheduled for tomorrow night. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second Barb.
Okay, now we're going to vote. So, Colette?
Okay, Dust?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you, Colette, and we'll come back to you now for Hickory Street Annual Pioneer Catholic Block Party.
Okay, I have some questions about it. One, how much information does this group know about as far as the recommendations that you need to be following for this block party? That's one thing. Today I heard a presentation by the Chancellor, Chancellor Shields, as far as not having off-campus parties, on-campus parties. That was, he made that come, those comments for the Labor Day weekend. And I'd like to find out what's going to be the status as far as this block party being held off-campus? And what, what's the involvement of the university? And what's the involvement of the City of Platteville as far as carrying out the recommendations for this block party? So I think those questions would, could be answered by Adam. Adam's on mute yet.
Nope, I'm here. Can you hear it? So pretty much what would happen is it would be the same process we follow as far as the city for any requirements that we strongly encourage them to follow all of the kind of recommendations and guidelines from both Grant County and the CDC. So we strongly would be encouraging that they would be keeping six feet of distance and that we would be encouraging them, even though they are going to be outside, that they would be wearing masks. Now, if they would not, it would be handled like any other procedure for our police department, where if they were to receive a complaint or concern, that they obviously would go to that event and try to gain compliance from those individuals that were not following either the CDC or the Grant County recommendations. And if those individuals continued to not follow that, they then obviously would take down their information and follow the procedures in getting Grant County Health Department involved, as well as then talking to the district attorney for any potential citation for violation of the governor's mandate. And then I don't know, Doug, is there anything else you want to add that I'm missing?
No, that's actually, the, the onus would very much be on the event organizers to comply with the mask order as appropriate and to engage in social distancing.
Would, would the police be there as a presence on the street?
We can have somebody swing by, but we have not made a practice of trying to preemptively enforce these types of things. We've been largely complaint-driven.
My question, next question is, what about contact with the Chancellor? If there is, hearing his comments today about on-campus, off-campus parties, what, what is his feeling about this, this get-together, this block party? Any, any contact with the Chancellor? Is he aware of it? Did he make any comment on it?
To my knowledge, the city did not reach out to the Chancellor about this, and I'm not sure what the organizers of the event themselves did.
Well, the number of people with the virus is going up, as far as especially among young people. I don't think it's a good idea.
I would note that on their application, it's specifically. For more stories.
Barb, you're fading in and out.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, they have specifically requested this to allow more state. That's right on their application. So part of their reason for asking for this street closure is so they have more area for social distancing.
Is there any idea how many people would attend this at all?
I'm, I'm not aware. This is an annual event. I, I don't know that we have ever requested prior numbers, how many people generally attend. And on the application that we have, it actually doesn't ask the applicant to identify how many people they think might attend. We might want to add that to an application, but to this particular application at this time, it is not a, it's not part of the application. So I don't think we can fault them for not providing that information.
Hey, Adam, quick question for you. Are we still in the phase of the governor's plan in terms of where you can't have larger than fifty in a gathering? Or has that changed?
So based on the recommendations from Grant County, it's a recommendation only. So it is not a physical requirement. So under the original, you know, badger bounce back and executive plans, absolutely, that was part of the mandate. Unfortunately, now it is, it is a recommendation that you try to limit that, but it is not something that is required.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
I do have one question. Bradford Street is still not completely finished. It's still under construction. And I guess maybe this is a question that Howard might be able to answer. The first event tomorrow, they want to close the street at four P M., which means that in order to get around the Newman Center, you would either have to go onto Bradford or go down Chestnut and come back in the other way. And then on Saturday, the eighteenth, they want to close at two P M. So I don't know, Howard, if you can give us any information on whether or not the street will be under construction at that point, and that would create a bottleneck perhaps with that closure?
Okay. At this point, it will still be under construction. It'll still be gravel. I've worked with Delta Three Engineering, and we're working with the contractor to make sure that it's open for travel tomorrow if, if this passes. I don't have a firm timeline as to when the actual paving will occur. I'm still working on that. I was hoping that it would happen today or tomorrow, that we would have some paving, but the weather had some other ideas for us.
Okay, I was just wondering about the early close time, whether or not the university, I assume on Friday, most classes would be done by four, so that shouldn't interfere in two P M. on a, I think it's a Saturday, then the eighteenth?
It's a Friday.
It's a Friday also, so is two P M. going to interfere? Does anyone know? I mean, all you people who have worked at the university or taken classes, the university of two P M. on Friday, is that going to be a major bottleneck because classes are just getting out?
I mean, we did approve that already. That was part of Ken's motion.
The, the second one, yeah, I should have probably noted that, but that, that, that did occur to me afterwards, so. But four P M. perhaps won't be a problem, but I do wonder about two P M. but, okay.
I'll be working with the contractor.
Howard, can you comment on September eighteenth as paving?
I can't promise it at this point. I, I'm working to try to have that paved by then, but I don't have a firm commitment on that.
Okay, folks, we have this street request, a closure permit for Hickory Street between Pine and Greenwood for tomorrow, September ninth, for their annual block party from four to eight. Right now, there's been no action taken, so the permit would not be issued. If you want to issue this permit, it will take a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the Hickory Street closing permit, or excuse me, the street closing permit for number F one, Hickory Street between Pine and Greenwood Streets for the Saint Augustine's University Parish Annual Pioneer Catholic Block Party, on September ninth, from four P M. to eight P M.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I will second it, Barb.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this for tomorrow. Adam, I would suggest that if this passes, that you remind people of the no more than fifty at a time, so that they are monitoring the attendance. That's the recommendation I would suggest. But I think it was Holly. H O L E Y, Holly, that contact, that made the contact, but that might be premature, so Colette will vote.
Dust?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Klein?
No.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Art?
No.
Motion carries on a four to three majority.
Thank you, and Adam, please make that very clear to them. And Doug, it would be wise if there was some passing by and maybe you could communicate with university police. All right, we'll move on to citizens' comments, observations and petitions. And Mike Mayer, we're going to start with you.
There we go. Hope everybody can hear me. And I'll keep this very brief. Last year, in August, four of my neighbors and myself appeared in front of the Common Council expressing our concerns about the Deborah Court Drainage Ditch. And Howard and I have discussed this several times over quite a period of time. There's a tremendous amount of rainwater runoff that comes from Carla Street and from Ridge Avenue that comes down into a tube that runs into a drainage ditch that runs through my backyard and all of my neighbors. We, there's also a very large tube. I'm going to attempt to show you a short video here in a moment or so that also drains rainwater off the golf course that hits my property line. It's about a thirty-six inch wide tube, which during heavy rain comes out with tremendous velocity. I have lost a tremendous amount of my backyard, this drainage ditch, when I moved in twenty-one years ago. In nineteen ninety-nine, was about twenty inches deep and about three feet wide. Now, at the widest point, is fifteen feet wide and up to six feet deep, right down to the bedrock. After presenting photographs to the Common Council last year and we are, my neighbors and I did speak at the meeting, Ken Killian was gracious enough to come over and take a look at the situation. And there's a couple of concerns, not only have I lost a good portion of my backyard again this year due to the heavy rain, but also, two, we have small children in our neighborhood. And a child falling four to six feet and hitting their head on bedrock would have dire implications. And it's affecting my property probably the most in the neighborhood, simply because of the fact that all the velocity of that water hits my property the hardest of any other property. So with your permission, I'd like to just show a real quick videos, just to give you an idea of what is happening, if I may. And Jody gave me a little coaching this morning, but I've never done a share screen before. We'll see if this works. So please let me know if it does not, if you'd be so kind. You can see the drainage tube there coming off of the golf course. This is the water. That, that tree is my property line. The water picks up velocity. Overflows onto lawn.
I think we're just seeing your files, not the file you opened.
Finally, you're not seeing the actual video?
No.
Oh. You're not? Okay, you're not seeing the actual video?
No.
Okay.
Um, are you using two monitors by chance?
I do.
Um, make sure that the one that the video is on is on the monitor that has like the green bar going across it.
Is there, yes.
If not, then you might have to drag it over to the one with, where your files are at right now.
Okay, the green bar is there where the files are. So it says, yeah, I'm screen sharing and I can activate the file, open the file, let it, let it go. But it sounds like you did not see it.
Are you screen sharing the, the file folder or are you screen sharing the screen? That might be the other issue.
Oh, okay, that could be possibly. So let me try that again and see. Can you actually see it now?
Not yet, no.
Not yet, okay, it's playing on my monitor, but it's apparently not for you. So at this point, I may not be able to do that. I'm not even certain the photographs would show, having not done this in the past.
I have, I see sixteen photos.
Nicola, is this the same issue we had this afternoon? Did you find a solution?
Um, yes, the, the solution is just as Ben described it, which is that if you have two screens, then sometimes when you open something and it appears on the second screen and you're, you're showing the first screen, then it's not showing up.
Okay, um, it's not. I just have a second monitor. So I'm not really exact certain, let me.
The other thing you could try is dragging your Zoom icon to the screen where the video is showing up. But it's tricky. I was having trouble this afternoon too.
Okay. Drag the Zoom icon to where the file is?
Where the video was playing, yeah, which is a different screen than the one that we're seeing.
Yeah, you're, you're looking at the photographs and then some video files.
Yeah.
Let me, let me try this. Can you see it now? No, okay.
Is it possible for you to drag and drop it, the actual video itself? Can you pick up the video and drag and drop it onto the screen where you have your folder open?
Yes, thank you for your patience. Let me try that, please, if I may.
Mike, what is your first on-court?
Yeah, I don't want to take up much of your time doing this, so I'll show you a couple of photos here. The, the water is like a raging whitewater rapids. I did give this video to Ken Killian last year. Can you see a photograph?
I can see the photographs. I have about sixteen photographs.
Okay, that's all? Okay. Yeah, I don't want to waste your time any further, not getting the technology correct for you.
Do other people see the photographs?
I need little thumbnails, yes.
They're all thumbnails. Yeah, and that's.
That's all I see.
Yeah, and I'm not certain. It says here I'm screen sharing, but it's not. I don't know anything other than that. So that's, yes, go ahead.
Why, why, I mean, you were going to share the, you were going to share. I think there probably have been more people who have looked at this and maybe stopped to see you and look at it.
Yeah, and Delta Three, Delta Three has looked at it as well. And Dan Driss, Dan Drissin says it is a significant problem that, in the neighborhood. He knows that it is on the city's list to address at some point in time. But I've lost so much of my property into that drainage dish that is right away for the city at this point in time, and it keeps getting worse as time goes on. So perhaps for the next council meeting, I could drop off videos to Jody Richards at City Hall and, and leave them with you.
I have a question. Barb?
Yeah.
I have a question for Howard. Howard, do you have a cost estimate to repair this?
Yes, it is in my proposed C I P. We had that last year, and I updated it and put it into our priority list for this year. So it should be coming in our C I P. list. It'll depend on what funding is available and what priorities everyone wants to put on this at that point. I'd have to look at it again.
Okay.
To see what, which priority I placed it.
It, it is dangerous. It's right at the edge of their yards and it's something that needs to, either you're going to have to fence it off or repair it.
I understand.
Okay, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this up and know that it's under C I P. We have several big stormwater projects in our city. And I think yours is at least one of three that I know of, maybe one of four that I know of. So it's not that we are not attentive to stormwater issues. It sometimes is that there's just not any.
Yes, I understand. Thank you for your time.
Okay. You're next.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
All right, very good. So coming to talk today, I'm sure some of you know me if you like coffee. Otherwise, I did write something down. I tend to, if I speak freely, go off subject. So I did write this down, so it may sound rehearsed. Hello, my name is Austin McCourt, and I am coming to speak today as a father, as a husband, as a business owner, and as a resident of the City of Platteville. We are in a time where leadership on a federal level is non-existent on the issue of masks. Leadership on a state level is not being followed by everybody. And leadership on a local level is needed right now. We need a citywide mask mandate, and we need it right now. We need the city, the Grant County Health Department, and the police departments to all work together to implement and enforce a mandatory, mandatory mask ordinance to protect and ensure the lasting success and health of Platteville and its citizens. What I say is not meant to be political or one-sided. Platteville businesses have struggled enough in two thousand and twenty, and I can tell you that firsthand. And now cases are on the rise within the university. And the shutdown of non-essential businesses, once again, could be a very real situation on our local level. Chancellor Shields has done a fine job of implementing guidelines for students on campus, but it is your duty to protect our city from the negligence and idiocy that is happening off of campus. Businesses, families and our community need to be protected by proactive and preemptive measures instead of having to apply for grants and loans after the fact. I can tell you for a fact right now that my business is not the only business that struggled to make it through the first shutdown. And I guarantee that me and many others will not make it through a second. This will also ensure consistency on a business-to-business basis. Right now, some businesses are adhering to the state mandate and others are blindly ignoring it. I would like for one of you today to tell me why it is just that one business who is doing everything in their power to abide by the rules and protect themselves and their community can be undermined and deemed useless because another business in town is not doing anything. This isn't an issue of civil liberties or personal rights. This is an issue of loving thy neighbor and protecting one another from harm. And you all are at the forefront of this decision to protect Platteville or to rebuild Platteville after it falls. Now, I went around and talked to several business owners around town. This is where I go off strip, so bear with me. I talked to several business owners from restaurant to car dealerships to assisted living. And their concerns are that the public only care about the decline in cases. And they don't care about what's coming up, especially with flu season. We don't know what's coming, and we need somebody to be proactive about this. So when Governor Evers' orders comes down at the end of September, what is our plan? What is your plan to make sure that my business, the one I took over in January of seventeen years, doesn't fail? the one I took over in January of seventeen years, doesn't fail because people won't wear a mask? And that's what I'm worried about. I want each and every one of you to think. What's the best for Platteville? I don't care if you believe this is a hoax, I don't care if you believe it's not as bad as they say, but what are we doing if it is as bad as they say? What if this does not go away? How do we make sure that these businesses are not going to fail? Because I can tell you, we're a first-year business, even though we've been there seventeen, we're considered first year, we got no grant money. We're not eligible. You've got several new businesses that popped up over the course of quarantine, I believe the number was five. In Platteville, you gained five businesses, you didn't lose any the first shutdown. It's not gonna be the same number as the second time around. So that's all I've got to say, and I believe that I'm gonna be going around and starting up a petition to bring forward to you guys at the next city council meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Austin, and thank you for speaking your mind and letting us know, and you do know that we passed a resolution last time endorsing the mandate of the governor, and that we do have an ordinance drafted. Um, not passed, but drafted, so I believe that there are councilpeople and city employees who are paying close attention, maybe not close enough attention, but close attention. So, yes, please, uh, please continue to keep us informed.
Absolutely, and I just wanted to say that, um, this message was meant for after the strike down of the statewide mandate.
Great, thank you. Um, Amy Seebuth-Wilson, I see that you have joined us. Did you want to talk during citizens' comments, observations, and petitions?
Nope, no, I didn't, I'm just listening in, thank you.
Just listening in, okay. I believe that that probably, uh, uh, goes through anybody who I know of who may have wanted to talk during this time. The person who is listed as ERICH, Eric, is that the same pure person that's Eric's iPhone? Evidently, those people are here, but.
Hi there, this is Eric Flesh. If I heard you right, you were asking if Eric's iPhone is the same as ERICH? And it's Eric Flesh on the iPhone, so not.
The other Eric is somebody else, okay?
Yeah, must be.
All right, and evidently that person is attending, but doesn't want to say anything. Let us move on then to item five on our agenda, which are reports. Reports, uh, we have two meetings of the Rede- Redevelopment Authority. Eileen, anything to report? Eileen, unmute yourself.
No, nothing to add.
Okay, Library Board, Robin.
Just want to point out that the library is open with, um, modified hours, but I think it's been closed for a long while, and people don't realize that it's open again, so it is, but nothing to add to the minutes.
Okay, Police and Fire Commission, Kathy.
Uh, nothing further to add.
Solid Waste and Recycle Task Force, Robin.
Uh, other than this is a very difficult year to address this issue, but, um, we are meeting and nothing to add to the minutes.
Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals, Isaac.
Nothing to add.
Historic Preservation Commission, Ken.
No addition to this set of minutes. Uh, keep track of it, because I'd like to make a comment about the minutes coming up next time. Thank you.
Okay, Housing Authority Board, Ken.
No addition to that.
Okay, the other reports in the packet were the Water and Sewer Financial Report for August, August Airport Financial Report, Department Progress Reports, and the Platteville Economic Development Partners Progress Report. Any comments, questions, or on any of those? Okay, then we'll move on to action item. We have one item on our action agenda tonight, and that is the inclusivity statement, which was tabled after considerable discussion at our August twenty-fifth meeting. So, um. Adam.
I'm here.
Yeah, you were over here, and then you did.
I know, now I'm over here now. Um, so yeah, so this was brought back, uh, again, as an action item for the council to consider. Um, what I tried to do was recap a lot of the statements that came out of the last meeting, which was to make this statement geared a lot more towards employees, volunteers, and elected officials, because obviously those are the individuals that, um, are either going to be comprised of city staff, uh, volunteers, that could be a wide range of anybody that's on a commission or a board, or even, um, and then elected officials, obviously, are all of you as council members. So what I looked at was trying to incorporate a lot of the different discussion that I heard, and I took some time to really kind of review multiple municipalities, and one that kind of stood out to me was the Village of Oak Park, Illinois, um, had a pretty robust, uh, equity, diversity, and inclusion statement, and one of the things I liked about it was that it specifically spelled out the three areas of equity, diversity, and inclusion, and really tries to establish, you know, when we as staff and volunteers and elected officials are looking at policies and procedures, um, and just overall processes for the city, you know, what are the key things we should be looking at when considering equity, when considering diversity, and when considering inclusion? Um, and, you know, what I struggled with a little bit was how in-depth do we get with, you know, a lot of the, you know, specifically with Oak Park, Illinois, they had a paragraph that was very wordy with naming, you know, every possible, or trying to name every possible scenario under the sun, and I think in some of the feedback I got from council members was, um, you know, we want this statement to be, uh, you know, somewhat broad in its ability, but also allow for a task force to kind of dig into future considerations of, you know, if there's things we really want to tackle, maybe that's a separate resolution or a separate consideration, um, and what this kind of statement hopes to do is lay the groundwork for that task force to look into future issues of equity, diversity, and inclusion, so. Um, this was my best attempt at trying to kind of get every, all the feedback I heard from everybody and put it into what you have in front of you, so you have kind of three options here tonight. Um, one is if we feel comfortable, if you as elected officials feel comfortable with what's here, you can pass it as is. Um, if there's changes you would like to incorporate, you certainly can do that, and if, uh, everybody agrees, you then can pass that as is. Or if you feel that there needs to be some further discussion or dialogue, um, you always have the option, as always, to kind of table it and ask staff to look into something different or give us a specific, um, you know, area you want us to focus on, so. Uh, that's kind of where we're at, but we did send it out, and the feedback I got, um, were from the majority of council members that responded, was, uh, what you saw would seem to be hitting the highlights, so that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, so, uh, I'll go a little round, Robin, and I'll just go across my screen here, uh, Robin, it appears you're the first person on my screen, so, um. What do you have?
Robin, Sarah, um. So I felt like it was quite a change from what was in the last packet, and so I had to just kind of digest, uh, because I was pretty comfortable with what was in the last packet, so I wasn't really looking for it to change so drastically. Um, but as I took it in and digested it, I, I like what I see. Um, I also tried to do a little more research myself, like you did, you know, just recommendations for those statements. Of course, my kid's gonna pop in here, um. And I kept getting lesses more, in the sense that, uh, it just helps people to see the clarity of the purpose of it and then do the rest elsewhere. Um, one thing that I got a little nervous with that was in the previous statement, um, or in the other recommended, recommendations, was the list of parties, communities, people that we, um, want to not exclude. And I think just by the nature of creating a list, we're automatically excluding people. We don't know who we've missed on the list until we realize we've missed on the list, so that's a little nerve-wracking to um, try to get that in there, and so seeing that come out maybe makes that cleaner. Um, I did feel, within the times, that it was hard to see everything dropped out of that first one. And so when I looked at it and went with what do I most miss from the statement, I came up with a sentence here, um, just this afternoon, so I'll read it, sorry, I can email it as well, but I hated to send it at the beginning of the meeting again, so. Um, I was thinking this would be possibly a lead-in to the task force sentence. So the city recognizes that structural, these are, this is verbiage from that first one that I just took a couple lines and shortened them. "The city recognizes that structural and cultural barriers continue to marginalize and exclude people within our community from access to and representation in city government, as well as from fully benefiting from the services we depend on to protect one's health, safety, and well-being. As a result," and then we go into that designation of a task force. So, that's my thoughts of now.
Very good, and, uh, Robin, can you just email that? Can you just email that sentence at least to Adam, so that he has it? Because I suspect you would have had trouble, but I started trying to write it down, that didn't work very well for me. So if you could email it to him, that would be great. Okay, Eileen, you're next on my screen.
I don't have any additions or subtractions.
Hey, Ken, you're next on my screen.
I'm satisfied with the new one. If you want to include Robin, that's fine with me.
Okay.
I think we need to move forward and develop the task force, and we can always make changes to the statement as we proceed along.
Very good, thank you, Jason?
Yeah, I, I like this version better than the first version, and I also support Robin's addition. Um, and I also like that it is a working statement, so we'll be able to build on it and, and, um, go from there, so yeah.
Kathy.
Okay, Barb, you're fading in and out still.
Maybe I'm going back and forth in my chair.
Okay, um, I'm, I am very satisfied with the revised um, statement that Adam, um, sent out. Um, I have, without seeing, uh, Robin's statement, I do have a little bit of calm with that, and I think I stated it before, and I'd have to hear it again, but um, I'm, I don't agree with a comment that we realize that we have, and I shouldn't even say it because I don't remember exactly how you put it, um, that we know we have done things incorrectly, basically. Because if we were asked what there's, what, what, what haven't we done? I like the statement as presented.
Okay, I think.
I like the current statement as presented as well.
Okay, so this is, you know, we've talked about this, Colette has reminded me that before we talked about it, we should take this off the table, so that we can talk about it. So, procedurally, could I have a motion that would say we would take this inclusivity statement off the table, that we can talk about it?
I would make a motion that we take the inclusivity statement off the table, so we can talk about it.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it, all right, now we'll vote on that.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I commend Colette for reminding me, and I apologize to all of you for not remembering that we have to take it off the table before we could talk. All right, so I heard, uh, from the majority of people, I like the new statement, too. I would not, uh, I would not feel comfortable adding to it without seeing it. So the question becomes, are you ready to adopt this? If so, we would take a motion in a second to do so. Or are you believing you want to have another shot at it with Robin's additional statement? And if that's the case, then we would have to have a motion to table, so that it could be brought back yet. Second, so folks, it's, uh, your, um, the ball is in your court, who do I hear?
Can I ask if you all have access to your email at this point or not? I mean, if, if you don't have access to your email, I certainly understand, and I'm willing to reread it, but.
I do.
Don't, okay.
I don't, I don't know if other people do or not.
I don't either.
Yeah, I think the majority probably don't. And I don't know that I can, by just hearing it.
I understand.
So, given the fact, as Jason said, this is something that we can look at again, I would make the motion that we approve the inclusivity statement as presented this evening. I understand, Robin, that you might want to add a sentence later, and certainly we can look at that at a later date, but I really think it's time to move forward with this.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I heard a motion by Eileen, and I believe I heard it by both Ken and Kathy. So, uh, Colette, pick one. And so the motion is to adopt the, uh, inclusivity, diversity, and equity statement. I might have gotten those in the wrong, uh, order, but that is the statement, as presented in tonight's council packet. Uh, with the knowledge that we can amend or change or add to at a later date if we so desire. So, uh, we'll vote on that, Colette.
Okay, Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nickel, Nichols, sorry. Cap?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And again, Robin, please send the verbiage to, uh, Adam, so that he can at least inform us in his inclusivity update about what that verbiage was, or is. Whatever the right verb is, okay. That is the only action item for our meeting tonight, so we'll go on with our information and discussion items. The first one is the inclusivity update on Adam.
Um, so yeah, this has kind of become a reoccurring, uh, information item. Uh, just wanted to provide just some quick updates of things that are continuing to kind of work on. Um, obviously, as we've been talking about, now that the inclusivity statement has kind of been finalized, um, the next step is to start a, you know, inclusivity, diversity task force. Um, so that's something that, uh, Council President Doss and I have kind of been pitching around as to how, you know, we're looking at other municipalities and seeing different versions. Um, so that'll be one of the things we'll be bringing forward to a future meeting. Um, I did sit down with Jamie Collins with the South West Rainbow Alliance on Thursday, August twenty-seventh, uh, to discuss the potential of what's called an LGBTQIA+ multimedia presentation uh, that we're going to be looking at having Jamie present. Uh, it's about two sixty-minute Zoom sessions, and that's something that we'll be looking to do for both staff as well as council members that would want to be a part of that. Um, it's, it, in talking with Jamie, kind of about what it is, uh, it seems like it'd be a very, I think worthwhile conversation to have and presentations to have to just get a, a different perspective on that. Uh, so we're gonna be looking into that. Uh, city staff, obviously, is reviewing, uh, kind of the next round of dialogue sessions that could occur for committees and boards, um, which we're gonna look to start in twenty-twenty-one, obviously, with the budget season, that's kind of putting a little bit of a delay on that, but we'll start looking into that. Um, and then one of the things definitely that's been going on in a lot of the kind of municipal manager calls I'm on, um, is a lot of conversation about, uh, diversity training, so there is a Region Five, um, WCMA call that I'm on, which is a lot of, uh, managers and administrators around in the kind of Madison to Southwest Wisconsin area. Um, and we're actually going to be at our next meeting here, coming up, meeting with a group out of Madison that does a lot of training, so I'm gonna kind of review that and see what that might entail, and then bring that back, obviously, to the council to talk about. Um, if that's something that potentially we would want to look at, uh, developing either for staff or for the council, so. So more to kind of come on that.
Right, and I would note that if anybody has suggestions relative to the task force, that you forward those suggestions to Adam. I think one of the things that will be, among the things that we're discussing is will membership on the task force be limited to city residents only? Will members of the task force potentially be non-residents that work in Platteville? So if you have thoughts about the task force itself, you might want to forward those, like I said, to both Adam and to me. And also, if you have suggestions as to people who you believe might be good to serve, I would suggest that you also forward those along to Adam and me. I'm, I'm thinking that, I think we've talked about 12, 13, probably not going to be necessarily a small group. So we've talked about a diverse, inclusive group, so, all right. Let's move on then to the next item. Oh, does anybody have any questions on this item? Inclusivity update. Robin? Questions?
I was looking for a reference from Jessie, our librarian, a national organization that we can join that she was recommending, and I just don't have the name right now, but I was wondering if you'd looked into that yet, Adam?
Yeah, it's, it's about $1,000 to be a part of. So those are some of the things that I'm collecting with staff as different organizations and that's part of the budget process I want to try to work in is to see where we can do that. But the one that Jessie alluded to in the past, the name's escaping me right now. It's like, it's government accountability gear. There it is, Jessie. It's gear is the one. And, yeah, we've looked into that one. I think that definitely would be a worthwhile one that her and I have talked about. And it runs about, yeah, there's about $1,000. So I'm slowly collecting kind of different potential organizations and kind of doing an analysis of what that might cost. And that's something that we'll try to look to incorporate into either the, you know, contingency budget or a specific line item in the city manager budget that would account for that. So that's coming.
Any inclusivity update? Eileen?
I have nothing to add, no.
Ken? Questions coming up? On inclusivity?
No, I noticed that Madison is starting with their task force, but they have a very large elaborate task force.
Did you say my name, Barb?
Yes, I did.
Okay, sorry, you were breaking up. The only thing I would add is I would also look into potential trainings and resources and stuff from the campus climate at the university. I know they've been doing some really good trainings. They have some good resources there as well, so.
Kathy?
No, nothing further.
Isaac?
Nothing further.
Okay, and let's move along to our next item, which is the proposed.
Sorry, Barb. I didn't really, just say something earlier, I meant to say. So we chose to put the task force forward and it looks like kind of an emphasis on policy and procedures, et cetera. And so one of my hopes when we first started talking about diversity, inclusivity committee or commission would just be encouraging collaborations for events and promotions, et cetera, around the community to be more welcoming. So while we get into the weeds of policies and procedures, I think it would be nice if we just emphasized to our committees and commissions that we do have, that each of them take a look to see what could you be doing to be more welcoming, encouraging, hosting events, those sorts of things. That's a, could be a side event happening, so just a note on that point. Thank you.
Okay, now we move into code amendments. And, oh, there you are. So tonight we're talking about home businesses. Is that correct?
That's where we're taking up from last time. 22.06. Specific standards, the section, but the changes that we would be considering regarding home occupation. So just to briefly recap, currently our ordinance has two types of home occupations. The first type is basically no approval is needed. Very straightforward, only the occupant of the residence works there and no other, no other employees, no outside activities. Customers don't come to the property. The second type would be where there may be other employees besides somebody that lives there. And usually the trigger is the client or customer has to come to that property for business purposes on a regular basis. So the, the changes we're, we're proposing, or at least to be considered, would add a third category to that where it would allow some portions or some aspect of the business to be have, or be operated outside or have an outside component, which currently isn't allowed. So that would be the third type. That was an issue, if you recall, it came up with, I think the last time we had some discussion on it was the kennel request down on Bailey Avenue and that was kind of the issue that stopped that request. So there was enough interest to at least pursue this as an idea to allow an outside component. So I did borrow significantly language from other communities that have that option. So that would be the primary changes to allow that third type of home occupation. The biggest difference for the, the standards that would kick in with the type three home occupation, it's called, would be that it has basically a sunset provision. It'd have to be reevaluated every two years. And I think at a previous meeting, somebody suggested maybe the first, after the, the first approval, it's a one-year review and then it goes to two years. So that would be another option, but as presented, it's every two years. Otherwise, the, the intent was to provide some additional requirements, standards, conditions that would apply to all the home occupations to provide a little bit more guidance on how they should be operating and so forth. So that would be the first thing that the council would need to decide, do we want to go down that road of allowing outdoor aspects of the business in a residential area? Isaac, I don't remember if you brought it up at the plan commission meeting or at the first council meeting, but he raised the question about business vehicles that are parked on residential property. And that is something that has proposed that as the type three, it talks about some regulations to screen that type of situation. But as I've been walking around town, driving around town and looking, especially in the early morning or in the evenings, I have seen lots of situations where there are business vehicles parked in residential driveways that I know are not related to a business on that property. For instance, I, the one that really stands out, I see them all over is contractors' vehicles. Ingersoll Plumbing, Bill's Plumbing, Schmidt Electric, Launger Brothers, for example, where I know they have a specific brick and mortar location where they operate that business. So those are just the vehicles that the employees drive home in, in the evening and they just park them there and then they go to work in the morning. So we'd have to be careful if we're not allowing that type of a situation on home occupation, but we are allowing it in a different situation on, that's not regulated. That could be real messy from an enforcement standpoint. So one thought I had is maybe we take a higher enforcement for the larger commercial vehicles that those would have to be screened or maybe not allowed. But a normal automobile or a light truck would not have that type of a situation. So I think that's something the council needs to consider as we move forward with this. So there, there are a lot of changes. It's all related to what I mentioned, providing more guidance and regulations. So I didn't plan on going through this line by line, but I'd be happy to try to answer any questions they had on these proposed changes.
Joe, before we start down the road here, going around the, around, can you give us an example of a, a type one home occupation? Somebody who has a home-based business but no outward appearance. So this would be.
Yeah, so this would be, you know, somebody who does, builds websites and they just, it's all electronic. They sit at home. It's done via mail, email, phone. The client does not come to the property. And it's just the, the resident is the only employee of that business. So that type of a situation would not even require approval from the city. The type two would be, we have some massage therapists that we've approved over the years. We had a hair salon over the years that were approved where it's, again, it's just the employee. Is it, the resident is the only employee, but the customer, client regularly comes to that property for the conduct of business. So that does require approval and we have done quite a few of those over the years. So the type three would be some type of a business similar to that where the, either the client comes to the property on a regular basis and, or the business has an outdoor component. You know, they're fixing cars and they occasionally pull the vehicle out into the driveway where it's visible to work on it, for example.
One more.
Or, yeah, something like small engine repair, something of those lines where they're doing some part of that business on an outdoor where it's visible, that would require approval as a type three home occupation. So because of that, where it's potentially more visible, possibly noise involved, there's additional regulations regarding screening. And that's where the, the requirement for a review period after two years so that if it does have the potential, I think, to create more problems for the neighborhood. So it gives us the ability to kind of claw back that approval if it, if it becomes a problem for the neighborhood.
Okay. Now I'm dropping on these home occupations and because Isaac is also on the plan commission, Isaac, I'm going to start with you. Do you have anything that you want to say about this? Might I add further clarification to the council people or?
Joe's pretty much commented on the question that I had earlier or in one of our meetings here, so that's about it.
Okay, Kathy? Comments, questions?
Did you say me, Barb?
Kathy, yes, I did.
Um, Joe, just a question, a clarification early on for the business vehicles in dry, in the driveway. So the revision, the question is whether or not business vehicles in a driveway for a conditional use for an in-home business, is that the issue? I mean, is that what you're talking about? You're not talking about including where current businesses can't have their employees drive their vehicles home?
Right, so my, my concern is where we, we don't regulate. I don't want to regulate when somebody just drives their business vehicle home and the, the business doesn't pay play on it. I, I don't want to go down that road, but my concern is if we were basically saying it's okay for that vehicle to be parked in that driveway, but the guy down the road who has a conditional use permit, we're saying his vehicle can't be parked in his driveway.
Okay.
You know, it, to me, that would be difficult to enforce one and not the other. So my thought would be, one of the ideas I had was maybe we just restrict if it's a, what I would consider a commercial vehicle, and I think there's weight limits on that, where a commercial driver's license is required to operate it, that type of thing, length of vehicle, that maybe that would be the type of vehicle that we'd be concerned about regulating and not the others.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Ken?
Did you call my name?
Ken, I called your name.
No, no additions at this time.
Okay. Jason?
Uh, no additions.
Eileen?
No, just maybe a clarification, Joe, because are you asking us tonight to decide on the one year or the two-year revisit? And also you mentioned the vehicles like a plumber's truck, for example, or electric van. You, you said in the driveway, but if they park on the street, there, there's no restriction for them doing that. Is that correct or did I miss that?
Well, if they park on the street, it's not a zoning issue. It's a, I know, a traffic parking enforcement issue that would be a separate part of the code. But I know there are limits on that, but again, it's limited to larger commercial semi-truck type vehicles.
Sure.
In chapter 39. So that would be basically a different situation.
Okay, so as far as the one year or two year revisit, once a conditional use permit has been allocated?
Yeah. As presented, it's two years and I just brought it up because I can't remember. Somebody mentioned it. I just made a note on my paper about the idea of one year initially and then two years thereafter. I don't know if there was any additional thoughts regarding that option. But I just thought I'd mention it.
So if there was a complaint, you would be addressing it anyway if it happened before.
So if there was a complaint, it, so if, if the use was approved and we received a complaint, we would just be verifying that they're meeting the conditions of the approval. If, or, you know, as the ordinance is written. If that was the case, then we would just, they would be allowed to continue. And then whenever that two-year period was up, then it would be revisited formally by the council.
And if they were not following the restrictions placed on them, is there a penalty or?
There's not a, well, I guess as a zoning violation, we could write them up as a citation for failure to meet the ordinance's requirements. If it's more comprehensive than that, there is the ability to, I think, have the council do a formal action to revoke the approval.
Okay.
So I guess the action would depend on how bad the situation was.
Right, and I guess that was my concern, if it became an issue for the neighborhood, two years is a long time to wait to correct it. So I just wondered what could be done in the meantime.
Correct. Yeah, we, we would have some ability to take action on it.
Okay.
The sentence that you're referring to is on page 452 of the ordinance in paragraph four, where it begins to describe the type three home occupation. And then in the second sentence, right now, it says these traffic noise and nuisances associated with the use. Type three home occupations need to be evaluated every two years. So if you are suggesting that there be an addition that says after one year for new home, new type three and after, and thereafter every two years, this would be the place that you would or where it would be put. Are you suggesting that?
I'm, I'm not necessarily suggesting, and I am a little concerned, you know, somebody who has a small engine repair shop, like a lawnmower repair shop, that probably would not normally be, I don't think, an issue for the neighborhood. I do wonder about if you're going to repair a car engine though. So I'm wondering when, when we say small engine, are we talking about somebody pulling a car into the driveway? Or I understand we have language in here that says it has to be screened and all that. I'm just a little concerned about that, that if someone would decide they wanted to go into car repair. You know, I got a friend who wants me to repair his car and then another friend asked me to repair his engine. And so is that addressed? I've, you know, got a friend who wants me to repair his car and then another friend asked me to repair his engine. And so is that addressed in here in that, in that sense?
Not specifically, but if, if that's what they're requesting as part of their business, then the council would have the ability to, you know, not approve that type of business if they didn't think it was appropriate for the, the neighborhood.
We can't hear you. Yeah, we can't hear you at all, Barb. I don't know what's happening. It's really difficult.
Maybe I've covered up my microphone. You can't, are you suggesting a modification in language?
I would like to hear what others have to say about it. I'm not saying that we should make that modification. I would definitely consider it if others feel that it, it should be something that we'd look, would look at.
Robin, I think you're the last person here on the round robin.
I guess my recollection, I felt was that it was one year and we wondered if we wanted it to come back every single year. And I was thinking we were suggesting that we could have the option of going every two years. Is that wrong? Was it always two years and we're adding one year?
So when I first drafted, it was two years. And like I said, I, I don't remember who made the, the suggestion or the, throughout the idea of that after the initial approval, it's revisit after one year. And then if it's still approved, then it's two years from there forward. So that's not how it's written. Right now, it's just every two years.
It would probably be my preference that if staff deemed it a common complaint of the neighborhood, then it came back as a concern. But that we didn't revisit every one of these contentious things every single year. I guess I would rather leave it at the two years. And then my other question or thought, when Isaac first brought up that conversation, I may have misheard. But what I was envisioning was more of like the back end of a trailer being used for storage of business items. And it happened to have advertising on it as well. And I was thinking that was covered somewhere in that we made it that you couldn't use travel, like the, the empty trailers as storage units. And that, that was addressing the specific example Isaac was bringing up, but I don't, I don't know if that was the case, if he was talking back under the storage, no. So I think I made an assumption in there, but even so, is that the case? And when you say a commercial vehicle, if it has a large kind of storage area and they end up not driving it so much and it just stays on a property?
We do have a, I don't remember which section, ten off the top of my head, but there's a provision in the ordinance now that basically would treat that as if it's an accessory structure, just like a storage shed. So it doesn't say you can't do it, but you have to locate it in a fashion, just like an accessory building. So it has to be side or rear yard, five feet from lot line, five feet from the structure, maximum size. Those types of situations. And I don't recall if there's some, I, I'd have to read it again if there's some appearance requirements as well. But the, the, I guess to answer your question, there are some other codes regarding that.
Sorry if I can ask for further clarification. If someone, so you have the sign that can only be six square feet, but if someone used the side of their garage for an advertisement, would that be a prob-
For advertisement for the business on that property?
Or if that distinction needs to be made?
It doesn't matter if it's a separate sign or if it's painted, it would still be considered a sign. So it'd be subject to the size regulations for that business.
That's all I have for now.
Review. It's, I think the last part are the old, all the conditional use permit changes.
I'm not sure I heard the first part of that.
Are there additional things you want to talk about? Changes for conditional use permits?
Yeah. So if we're done with the home occupations, there's a couple other items, changes that I'd like to point out. Under regulations for temporary signs, one thirty-one and page one thirty-one and page one thirty-two, there's some language proposed for exceptions for temporary signage. And this was directly due to a change in the state law a couple of years ago at this point regarding signage for construction sites. So it's fairly specific, but we really don't have a choice in it. It was a law change. And then the, the rest of the, the big changes, as you mentioned, section twenty-two thirteen, conditional use permits. And this also, these changes are being proposed due to changes in the state law regarding the requirements for communities to follow for approving or not approving conditional use permits. So the, the language that I put in here is essentially taken from a, a model ordinance that was created by UW Madison faculty. So again, to be totally honest, we don't have a whole lot of options on that. We really have to follow the state law. So these changes are being proposed to bring our code in conformance to those changes. So that would be the conditional use permit. I would point out the on page one forty-one at the end, continuing jurisdiction revocation. That was the language that I mentioned under the home occupation, that we do have the ability to go in, since home occupations are approved as a conditional use permit, that we do have the ability to go in and revoke an approval. So we would, if, if the situation was bad enough, we wouldn't have to wait for that full two years to review it. So that was what I was referring to in that one. The only other changes, there's some definitions, childcare center on page one forty-eight. That was to have our ordinance be more in compliance with language that's Houston state statutes. Kennel definition, that's to have the same language that was used in chapter six. That was already approved. And then there are a couple of language regarding lot definitions, yard definitions. That was really for clarity and also to kind of address some issues that were raised in the housing study regarding trying to make it easier for affordable housing, I would say. And one particular area that I tried to address is the, the issue of corner lots in residential areas. That as our ordinance is drafted now, as far as the required setbacks. You, for a, if you have two, two lots that are exact same size, one is a corner lot, one is an interior lot. The buildable area on the corner lot is quite a bit smaller than an interior lot. So it makes it harder for having a smaller lot to be more affordable and still have it buildable. So I basically made the changes to reduce setbacks on those interior lot lines on a corner lot. So it's more comparable to an interior lot. So that's what all those changes are regarding in the yard definitions, starting on page one fifty-seven. And that is all the changes that I have proposed. So any questions or clarification that would be needed?
Okay, I changed my microphone. So tell me if it's better. Can you hear me?
Yes, it's much better.
I didn't even know you could change your microphone, but I figured that out. Isaac, any further questions? And as I make this round robin, if you believe this is ready to go to an action step, also tell me that. So Isaac.
I think we're ready for the action step.
Okay, Kathy?
Joe, could I just have you repeat the last thing that you talked about with a, a house on a corner lot versus an interior lot?
Sure. So if you look at in my package, it's one fifty-nine and one sixty, it's the, the diagrams. It might be easier to explain if you look at that, the page one fifty-nine is the, the current situation. And if you look on a corner lot, there's a street yard setbacks. Then there's a rear yard setback and a side yard setback. So under our code right now, street yard and rear yard are a twenty-five foot setback, side yard is ten. So that means the corner lot has a twenty-five, a twenty-five, a twenty-five and a ten, where interior lot line has two twenty-fives and two tens as far as the required setback. So that one additional twenty-five required setback on a corner lot means that there's less buildable area where you can actually put the house. So if we're talking affordable housing and allowing smaller lots, that also means that buildable area is getting a lot smaller. So basically the proposed change is to, for a corner lot, you eliminate that rear yard setback. So instead you have two street yards and two side yards. So then a corner is two twenty-fives and two tens and an interior lot is two twenty-fives and two tens. So it kind of evens the playing field a little bit. So that, that is, that is the change. And like I said, it's, it's really trying to mesh with the idea of allowing smaller lots and still have a, a good buildable area for, for houses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Kathy, do you believe this is ready to go for action?
I believe so.
Okay, Ken?
Well, I need to make a thorough reading of it. So if you're thinking about next time, I guess that'd be fine, but I have to have enough time. I did have a question for Joe on page one fifty-six. Structure.
Yeah, I added that definition. There was a, a couple items that came up over the years, but most recently regarding well, it's actually Coon's Country just got a variance to allow what they're considering an auto display ramp in the street yard. It kind of meets our definition of an accessory building. So they had to get a variance where it was located. But just talking to the, the sign company or the company that was providing that, it was very clear to me that as they're reading our ordinance, it was not clear what a structure was in our ordinance. So I was borrowing some language from another code that I found that provided a, a definition of a structure, because right now our code does not have a definition of structure.
Well, is this a structure? Is this a, could this be a house?
A house would be an example of a structure. Could be a house, it could be a shed, it could be a garage, it could be a, a sign. Could meet the definition of a structure.
I think the thing about that thing that's, that sentence effectively goes was for semi-permanent location. So what's an example of semi-permanent location, one that is gonna be?
So I'll, I'll give you a, a perfect example, the, the storage sheds that are very common in residential areas in the backyard. The, the ones that come now, the, you can buy them from the Amish, the Mennonites have them all over the place. We can buy them. They bring them in on a truck, they unload it, it's built on skids. It's not built on a concrete slab. It's located there, but it sits there for ten, fifteen years until it, you know, no longer is used or whatever the case may be. So it's not, it's not permanently attached to the ground, but it's there for basically a, a permanent situation that it doesn't move.
I, I have a different thinking about semi, semi-permanent location. Is the location per se semi-permanent? Or you're talking about the structure, you're talking about the structure semi-permanent?
Correct.
So that wouldn't be the same as we have two different things here. Semi-permanent location is something else to me. Location, the location's not semi-permanent. Location is permanent first, the location, in other words, the land isn't going away. But the structure's going away. So that didn't make sense.
Ken, if you, Ken, if you have suggestions of how to improve that sentence, by all means, talk to Joe about it. Otherwise, Eileen?
Yes, I am ready to move forward.
And Robin?
I was just trying to make sure that I saw the outside activity stuff clearly. So I think I've got it, but under G on page fifty-two, only one building or freestanding sign. So that's kind of where I was asking about that sign shall be permitted. That only one building, that's not, that's referring to signage, not referring to like the size of a shed only being six square feet or a
Right. It's basically saying one building sign or one freestanding sign is allowed. So in other words, they have one sign, it can either be located on the building or it could be freestanding.
Okay, that just tripped me up, but otherwise I'm ready to move to action.
Okay, well, it sounds like we have two kind of rough areas of language. Joe, take a look at those. And, and otherwise, I believe this will move to action for the September twenty-second meeting.
Actually, no, it actually
We have to have a public hearing.
Right. It'll have to be a public hearing and it, it does require a class two notice. And I do not have time to meet the requirements for a class two notice for that meeting. So it'll be a public hearing on the October thirteenth meeting.
Okay, sorry. Yep, after I thought about that, it is an ordinance change, so it does take a public hearing. So if there are any slight modifications in language, Joe, be sure and put those in for information next time or have him, have Adam include him in his weekly update if we smooth over some of that language. Otherwise, the public hearing will be the first meeting in October. Okay, I believe then that that concludes our information items for tonight. If I can find my agenda again, which means that then we would work in, we would move into the work session, which I know that Adam and Ben and Will, welcome Will, are prepared to lead us forth, so to speak. So Adam, Ben and Will, it's your show.
Yeah, so I told Will we'd be started at eight-thirty, so we're at eight-thirty on the dot. So nice job, council. So the plan basically that I want to try to accomplish tonight, obviously with staffing with the council is, you know, we're getting now to kind of the, the fine tuning of the strategic plan. And Ben has really been tasked with kind of creating the framework that the strategic plan is going to go into. So I've assigned him with the assignment of kind of creating how this thing document is going to look and feel at the end of it. Will obviously has been our go-to doctor here for the survey. So he's been really helping us with that. And our plan with the survey is to probably give it about another week to allow people to, you know, give their suggestions. But Will has been, you know, over the last couple of weeks, been giving us updates in regards to what information there is. And so far, a lot of the comments that we've seen are, are very similar to what we have been really drafting in our, in our strategic plan for the most part. So he's been keeping us kind of a, a breast to anything that seems out of the ordinary. But what I thought I'd do is, so the game plan with that is we have September twenty-ninth kind of tentatively on our schedule. If we would need to have another work session, it would be a special one. I don't know if we're going to need that. I think we're, we're, we're pretty much following the right kind of plan that we have right now. We're, we're hoping on October sixth, when we look at the CIP, to have a final draft presented to the council. So that's kind of our intention here is we're going to get a draft out to you guys as soon as possible towards the end of September. Allow you to review that and then look at that. Allow you to review that and then look at that plan on the sixth. And then potentially at the October thirteenth, common council meeting, we then would be adopting the plan. But what I'd like to do tonight is essentially give Will an opportunity to kind of go over some of the most up-to-date survey results. And then the document that I sent you guys last week has broken out really, what I did is took the community values that we established and looked at, you know, the last strategic plan that we did in this one and created what are called community value success factors. And those are more or less our themes. So we've kind of created three themes in the strategic plan that have a couple of key initiatives. And what I'd like to do tonight is give some opportunity to allow, to dive a little deeper into those key initiatives. And that'll give Ben and myself the ability to kind of see where we're hearing information, if there's some agreement. We obviously filled in some of the information that we got from council members that provided feedback. So our intention is to just kind of go around, do a roundtable of each of those themes and see if there's anything else you'd like added. But first, I think the first thing is I want to turn it over to Will. Will, what's going on with the survey?
Okay, um, thank you. On the survey, honestly, in terms of the overall results from what I sent last week, not a whole lot of change, other than the number of responses. We have now over a thousand response, let me rephrase. Over a thousand people that responded and it got recorded. I have to weed out quite a bit where I think people opened it and left it and then it gets recorded a week later. But we have, you know, one link, so not sure how, but there's two links. One of them has almost eight hundred responses and one of them has almost four hundred responses. I still need to learn a little more code and do a few more tricks to try to weed out. For example, there was an IP address from Saudi Arabia that I thought, I think it would be good to see, to separate out the more local addresses from the others to see if there's any significant differences. Overall, um, not a whole lot of change. Let me share my screen if I can. There we go. Um, for the quality of life, the numbers have not changed a whole lot. We still see that local neighborhood raising kids are on the high end. Place to retire and place to work and place to visit, we're on the lower end. The other thing I thought would maybe be a better visualization for the council would be a graph. So, in this case, I don't know why Excel makes the colors that way it does, but this is what it chose. Basically, you can see that in general, good is being chosen overall. Visit was more on the moderate side and local neighborhood had the highest number of excellence. For impressions, kind of a education is our best impression, giving us eighty-five and some change. And our lowest impressions were enrichment, reputation and community. So these are the, kind of on a subjective scale, people felt that these were areas that were maybe not as high as the rest. But notice, the bottom there is a sixty-five, it's not a zero. So the, the relative difference between these is actually rather small. My computer is struggling at the moment, please excuse it. Um, for opportunities, we had a similar one in mind, you know, this chart looks pretty terrible. But, um, education came in the forefront. Shopping, as we mentioned last time, was still at the bottom. Um, diversity is, and employment were kind of the next two runners-up for bottom. Yeah, so in this case, the question or the statement regarding diversity is whether or not you feel that there is a valuing of diversity and a, um, a effort by the city to encourage diversity, that Platteville is a welcoming place. On here, people are very satisfied with fire. And the lower satisfaction we saw here with code violations, and this is something that comes up in the qualitative feedback, is a fair number of complaints about maintaining code violate, or maintaining code enforcement. The library gets a fair amount of praise, Jesse. And the trash services as well. There doesn't seem to be a huge standout, other than, and again, looking at the qualitative data, other than typical things like street repair, crosswalks, shopping. But in general, there's some pretty good satisfaction. And if we're looking at the extreme ends as to who is dissatisfied, I thought it was a bit interesting that recreation and water got dissatisfactions, despite the fact that recreation also got a fair amount of praise overall. So. I have some demographics. I think it was Barb, you had asked for a breakdown in statistics? No, Eileen, Eileen, it was. So I can do this, I can do it right now. If anyone has a question like, what's the breakdown by gender or age? But to show you kind of who's responding, still majority white. We have a fair number of young folks responding. Pretty well split on gender. And the vast majority of people who are responding are rather new residents, which doesn't surprise me, given the nature of the survey being online. I expected younger folks to do this, which means they'd be here less time. But we do have still, there's plenty of, you know, a quarter of responses were from people who've been here over twenty years. And I have other data that we can look at. In terms of updates, this really didn't change at all. People want Facebook updates and email updates the most. So. Um, in terms of some of the qualitative data, let me see. And I can delve into this and we can take a look if someone wants to, but I don't want to spend time dictating. But we did, again, we saw a fair number of similar themes about small businesses. Restaurants is a big one. Code enforcement. A few people about security and a lot of it was more about like noise and vandalism type of things. Second Street seemed to come up a fair amount. One person asked that we make the roads never degrade, which I thought would deserve a Nobel Prize, but I thought I'd share that. And we had some pickleball enthusiasts join our survey. And so pickleball got mentioned about seven times. YMCA, again, the, see, there's pickleball again. The idea of a community sender and a splash pad were things that kept on coming up as well. I'll leave it more for if you, if anyone has questions or would like to know a, need to dive down into a piece, I can do that right now, I have the data set open, so.
I think kind of like recreation, that people love it, but they still want more, might cause kind of mixed, the way the numbers play out. But I was wondering about code enforcement, if you could, the question? Because I wondered if people who felt like there was an overemphasis on code enforcement, perhaps people who've gotten hit with shoveling or lawn mowing or things like, they would respond negatively because they felt like we were-
Targeting them?
Yeah, yeah. All the question?
Yeah, so the question regarding code enforcement was, please rate the following characteristics as they relate to Platteville compared to other communities around. And, I think it's in this one. Open this, oh, that's the diversity one, sorry. Satisfaction, it's just overall satisfaction with the following services. And code enforcement, weeds, abandoned buildings, et cetera. That's just what it says. There is some room for interpretation, but, so some people may be dissatisfied because they got hit with it. Some people may be dissatisfied with it because it's not being enforced enough. But based on the qualitative responses, it seemed more about stronger enforcement.
Can you shoot numbers of satisfaction separated out by race and ethnicity in terms of resident satisfaction?
Sure, I'm going to stop sharing my screen for a moment. And, let me get that up for you. I'm going to do the averages, if you don't mind, just so that, you know, it's see twenty pages of data. Bye. All right, and it's not the prettiest looking data, but it will give us a sense. So I'm going to make this into a binary, a white or not white, just for sake of data presentation. And so for the white folks, these are the data. So for example, police, a three-point-eight, fire, four-point-oh-five, four-three-three. Just to give you a sense of where things are at. And I can look at a particular one if you want. And for folks who are not white, police was three-point-five, three-point-nine. Rather similar, just based on a quick look like that.
Any responses do you have in that category?
For the non-white folks?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, observations are listed here. If, if you want me to look at, say, specifically people who are identified as black, I can do that too. Or Hispanic, et cetera. I know this is not the most friendly and I can, if you want, Jason, in the final report, I can break certain things out, easy.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, thanks.
Do you know what, just that lowest scoring one would be? Like one, two, three lines down, three-point-zero-three?
Three-point-zero-three is code enforcement. Um, yeah. And the highest one is trash services followed by library and, or recycling and trash then followed by library. And down on for white folks or folks who self-reported as being white, we see library, trash, EMS and fire are a little bit higher for them. And interestingly, just based on me being a CJ professor, the view of the police department was pretty similar as well as, yeah, fire, EMS, code violation. We see a fairly similar amount. Other questions?
This isn't, is it, sorry. Age restriction due to it being researched? So is the eighteen, is a sign up, you have to be eighteen?
No, there was one person, maybe two people that were under the age of eighteen, that self-reported being under the age of eighteen. More so, um, when I was talking with Adam, there are some considerations. If so, if a minor were to enter a statement in the box that said something, may require mandatory reporting just by law. But, um, not a, not otherwise a very specific reason at this point. It would be interesting to survey the youth of the, of the city as well. I just don't think the youth are too interested in code enforcement or pavement or stuff like that.
So Will, this is Eileen and I had asked you about housing and the people who owned houses and their age. I don't know if you have that?
Um, yes.
If you do, I just thought maybe the rest of the council members would be interested. But that, that was interesting to me to see what age group owns homes.
So I believe I provided this one to you. So in terms of owning homes, it was the middle age to upper end there. Easier though would be the percentage because of the breakdown here. So the vast majority of forty-five to sixty-five-year-olds and seventy-five, they own their homes, whereas young folks rented. And that's a trend we see in general. So a few people who indicated they had no stable housing or were homeless were youth, which is actually something that's also would be suggested by research. Rent-free was kind of interesting as expected. Younger folks, maybe living with parents and this age, which I was a little surprised about.
It also seemed to show that the, the amount of rental properties and the own, home, owned homes, they're very, very close. And we had found that in the housing study-
Yes.
Done for the city. So I, I found that interesting that it confirmed it in this, this survey as well.
About forty-six percent of people said they owned and about fifty-four said something else, fifty of which said rent, so. And having been on the market for a house recently, that sounds correct as well. If you're interested within, say, eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds, or no, I'm sorry, it's the other way around. For folks who own, a quarter of them were thirty-five to forty-five, a quarter of them were forty-five to fifty-five. For folks who rent, eighty percent of them were under the age of twenty-five. So we can see that's where the bulk of that is and that's probably representative of the school for the most part.
Right.
So I'm happy to do this. Again, if there's other questions, we included a fair number of demographic or characteristic variables that I can do this with, with a fair amount of ease.
I, I do have a question. At the end of this, Will, are you going to like write up a report or is that what?
I can, yes.
Okay.
I'll talk to Adam. I guess the question for me is, I'm, I've been volunteering my time and I'm happy to volunteer more of the same amount. But if there's something that would require maybe a lengthy write-up or, you know, what have you, I can supply the data for someone else to do that fairly easily and advise on it. A generic write-up and some tables I'm happy to make.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, that's kind of our intention within the final product of the survey is we'd have a section that specifically talks about, in the strategic plan, we'd have a section that talks about the survey and has some, you know, very high-level summary charts and things. And then if people want to get into the weeds, we've had a couple of requests from, I know there's a, a library project that's being done right now where they're working on kind of a grant and they're, they're looking at, they'd like to see a little bit more of the, in the weeds data, that we can provide that to them, so.
Yes. Or if Eric would like some info on the museum or, yeah, I can do that. And, yeah, I guess executive summary, I think is the phrase I see often. Yeah. And one last thing I'll share. Excuse me for one second. For, and this is something, it's somewhat useful and there's ways of looking at it, but actually I want this one. For the qualitative responses, um-
I don't think we're seeing it right now, Will.
I don't think anything changed, Will.
Oh, sorry, let me try this. Oh, sorry. Let me try this. That's right, because it does it by window. Okay. Um, for the qualitative responses, um, one thing I, I consider, it's a, just a click, so it's not difficult for me at all, is a word cloud. And it actually was somewhat useful. At first it was not at all, because it was like, don't. But we can see road, city, street pop up pretty close, snow, safe, student, COVID campus. To give us a sense of what is being said frequently, Qualtrics comes with a package that can highlight certain words as well and give you. If, if the library is interested in, say, certain specific things, I can look for certain words and have it highlight those. There's, there's some, some utility there.
Interesting. That's, what's that, what's this kind of? What, what is that kind of thing called?
It's called a word cloud.
A word cloud. Okay.
They're, um, they're useful when you have big, big data and that the it knows to filter out things like the word "the", but so longer term, for example, shopping pops up bigger. Um, we still see road and city improve streets, energy. I saw a fair number of those mentioned as well. So.
Oh, yeah. Good.
And I'll just show the last one since we're here. In the magic wand, the long-term, if you could do whatever, it's actually still pretty much the same. So infrastructure was something I saw popping up recently as well, so. Okay. Any other questions for me?
No, I would say, Will, can you send me the kind of latest and greatest Excel data dump that you have?
I can. I have one or two things to brush up on it, but I can do that to you tomorrow.
Perfect.
Thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
Well, Will, you're more than welcome to stay and listen. Otherwise, if you got something else you would like to do with the rest of your evening, feel free to do that as well.
I have a forum series that everyone is welcome to attend. At the school, we're talking about George Floyd and the recent unrest and hosted by the CJ and Social Sciences Department, so I will go prepare for that and that starts tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
Alright, gang. So now we're gonna go to phase two of kind of this process. Um, so obviously with Zoom, this gets a little difficult. We'd obviously like to be kind of in-person to kind of do this, but with COVID-19 and everything, um, I think this is kind of the safest option. So as you kind of heard from Will, a lot of the things that we kind of came up with in our, in our sessions are not too different than what we're seeing from the survey results. So I think what I'd like to do is just kind of go briefly through the three themes that we've kind of established and the key initiatives and just give an opportunity for anyone to provide kind of any additional feedback or thoughts. So the first theme obviously is safe welcoming and engaged community, and the key objective we had there was a new and updated fire station. So what we have right now is kind of the general themes for 2021, 2022, and 2023. Is in 2021, we'd be looking to complete the fire department analysis and then start implementing the recommendations. We'd work with the Platteville Townships and obviously the other townships as their partners, look to promote finding, findings to the community and gather input, and then begin a fundraising campaign by actively recruiting volunteers, potentially deciding the location and building design. Um, in 2022, we then would start completing the fundraising campaign and soliciting bidders. Um, and then in 2023, we'd be looking at either potentially if we were able to begin construction or at least set a deadline for construction. So based on that, I guess, is there anything else that anybody feels should be kind of added to that specific topic for newer updated fire station?
Can you all see the the Excel sheet, by the way?
Yep. Oh, I don't know.
Perfect.
Okay.
So we're at number one, so I guess I'll open the floor. Is there anybody that feels there should be something added to that particular item? Do you think we're capturing it? Thoughts, concerns? This is your chance.
So, so Adam, with this particular thing, it says, begin fundraising.
Yes.
And then complete fundraising. Um, have, I mean, I guess, I would like you to define what you're thinking of, because I'm not necessarily thinking this is a donor-driven facility.
No, I think it would be a combination of both. So I think there's, you know, specifically with the kind of grassroots organization that is being run by, I think, Bullock Kloster and Deb Rice. They have talked about how there would be some type of potential fundraising component that they would do. But I think when we're really talking about fundraising campaigns, it would be talking to, you know, state and federal legislatures about potential funding that would be available. Also as well, reaching out to, you know, Grant County as well as the state and federal for any type of grant assistant that might be available. So that's kind of what I think the fundraising arm of this is going to be, as well as, you know, potentially then working with Lers, obviously, on the, or municipal advisor on the long-range financial plan. And that's what's really gonna dictate, you know, when we talk about beginning construction or setting a deadline for construction, that's gonna be based on the long-range financial plan, because that is gonna have to dictate, you know, what our goal in this is to get the information, find out, you know, where we think is the best location, whether it's renovating or new, and then based on that, coming up with a cost estimate, which then really cements in stone. You know, okay, if we had to do this 100% by the city, what date is that? And then we set that in stone and then we work backwards.
And when you say by the city, you're talking about tax revenue.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. I, I didn't want anybody to believe that we, that we weren't talking about tax revenue.
No.
As part of fundraising.
Right.
Actually, I'd like to see 2023 be have the open house, but I think that's probably.
That'd be awesome.
It's probably too aggressive.
No, so I think as we said, you know, Ben and I are gonna continue to kind of revamp this, just as you indicated Barb, I think there's some cleaning that needs to be done in the general ideas, but we just wanted to give an opportunity for that. So I'm not really hearing anybody speak up, so I think we'll move to the next one. So tell a better story of Platteville. So some of the information we got from council members was in 2021 to look at, you know, coordinating community-wide marketing theme by organizing, you know, a community group, either called Platteville United or United We Prosper. To begin meeting with representatives of the city, you know, UW-Platteville, Paydick, a bunch of different organizations, where all of these groups kind of have strategic plans and mission statements, and all have ways of kind of telling their story. And then coordinate a community marketing message. So this is something that, you know, obviously I've been trying to, one of the things that I wanted to do pre-COVID was do kind of a, almost an around-the-corner series as the city manager going from business to business. Um, and that's something Jody and I now, we're gonna start working on, even though we are in COVID, and kind of look at doing that. But just as we've talked about, do a different way of how do we tell the story? So looking at different ways that we can market or potentially all of our organizations between us, you know, Main Street, the incubator, Paydick, kind of having a really central marketing theme or looking at potentially doing, you know, we've talked, I've talked to some council members about, you know, potentially doing videos or website or social media. So I think those are all things that would fall under this bucket. Um, so as you can see, in 2022, then, we would look to continue to update or revise this community market, marketing approach. Um, and then 2023, you know, look at ways to involve volunteers and telling our story, articles, you know, vignettes for volunteers. Um, and then potentially looking at ways that as staff, you know, we could work with departments to communicate our message better, different things like that. So that's one of the areas that this kind of entails. So I guess any other thoughts or things that you would like to see as regard to tell a better story of Platteville?
Adam, can you tell me, Jody, Jody is our communication coordinator, communication specialist, whatever we call you, Jody.
Yep.
And her position is currently what?
Her position right now is a part-time position, so she is scheduled for roughly about 30 hours a week. Um, so that is one of the things we're actually looking into this budget is potentially having that position become full-time. And then her and I, and she's taken kind of the, the bull by the horns here, is, she's talked to UW-Platteville's marketing department or the communications department about potentially having an intern that would be with her, under her, that could help with a lot of these, you know, specific marketing or commercial kind of campaigns.
Because I really think it's essential that we, if we expect increased communication, that we have increased staff time. Whether that be interns, whether it be additional time for Jody, whatever, but I don't think we can expect, I, we can't expect more.
Right.
Without investing more, so to speak.
I would agree. Okay. Alright, so then we'll go to three, which is a topic that we've been discussing for a while, and this is the kind of create the inclusivity diversity committee or task force. So our thought process here in 2021, we would recruit volunteers from a broad perspective to serve on this community. As we've talked about, you know, there's been some dynamics of how many people do we have? Do we, you know, go outside of the city? So those are all things I think that we need to kind of figure out in 2021. Um, and then 2022, you know, there's the idea about, you know, setting goals to move the community head in all areas of inclusivity, diversity. I think Robin kind of hit it on the head. One of the things we talked about is not only do we want to do this, but talk about, you know, how do we do some community-specific events that are pushed out of, out of this topic to, you know, bring in more, more inclusivity and just bring a better understanding of, of kind of diversity and everything else that we're trying to accomplish. And then right there in 2023, you know, host an event to recognize city volunteers or future volunteers and city communication, again, trying to increase that inclusivity, diversity, and participation in the overall city of Platteville government process. Anything else anybody would like to see added to this?
Well, I, I really think from what I've heard from people that get appointed to boards and committees, that we need to have kind of a better way to recruit people to boards and committees, and then also maybe somehow a better way to orient them to what the border committee does. Because a lot of times I hear from people that geez, now I've been on here a year and a half, it's your term and I finally got it figured out.
Right.
So, because we don't really have a very good way of updating and orienting sometimes, I don't think.
Sure.
I would say on this topic especially, that the sort of in-service days or coming together for a shared vision, it will take some building cohesion and trust within the group to really get into some tough conversations. So I would echo what you're saying, Barb, in that maybe it's kind of part of that orientation is them developing the goals of the group, but really spending some time focused on how are they gonna get it all done? Um, the other piece I don't see here is what was kind of mentioned in the statement was about policy and procedure review, so I don't know how we
Yep.
incorporate that in there.
Good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm mostly guessing that that committee is gonna have to split into subcommittees, right? So.
Probably, yeah.
But that they, you know, have some people that are willing to work on literature and then others working on activities and events and whatnot.
Alright. Um, and then number four, we have increased focus on promoting Platteville's history and historical preservation. So there were a couple of different themes that came out of this. So in 2021, you know, looking at having the mining roll of Jameson Museum, the Friends Museum, the historic preservation committee in the chamber, meet to work together on a marketing mission statement plan that will help increase the visibility and importance of the history. There was a lot of talk about, you know, looking at doing in, in 2022 and 23, walking tours or host an annual, you know, cemetery kind of day where we talk about the specific headstones that are there. You know, specifically, we talked about developing and publishing kind of some written history within the parks. So I think that's another one. So these are all kind of the themes that are out there, you know, develop a storyline that can be incorporated into a flyer, put on all the websites. And then look at, you know, in the future, creating some form of a budget line item that coordinates and promotes our history and emphasis on historical preservation. So looking at building into the budget to ensure that we're continuing to focus on kind of that promotion of history and historical preservation. So I guess anything else anybody would like to see kind of incorporated into the three-year plan here that would relate to either promoting Platteville history or historical preservation?
Adam, I would just say include the Main Street program because they have had the Walk Down Main and they've had cemetery reenactments, if I can call it that, where they actually had people play the role of the people that they were talking about. So.
If I might interject one thing, may I propose as long as we are bringing up potential partnership opportunities with the museum that we include natural history, which would be a natural potential partnership with the Roundtree Branch Trail and doing some nature interpretation on the trail.
PCA.
So cultural and natural history. Thank you.
Great.
I think for me, Adam, one would be to just try to highlight and, and kind of bring forth a little bit more of the, the history of people of color in Platteville.
Sure.
Um, just kind of bringing that to the forefront, highlighting that. Um, also working to not, not shy away from some of the, the, the maybe not so, not so good parts of our history, but highlighting them in a respectful and educational way.
Sure.
I need a, and a clarification to the budget line item to coordinate and promote the history. Does a historical preservation commission get a line? And how can you just help me understand how that's distinguished and separated?
They do, if memory serves me off the top of my head, they get, I think, $500 is what currently is allocated towards that. And I know there's been, um, in some of the discussions we've had, that's been one of the asks is looking at potentially, you know, in future budgets, increasing that amount or providing, you know, some type of additional support structure for historical reenactments or, you know, kind of as Jason alluded to, some of these, you know, special projects or, or specific things, looking at creating a little bit more budget flexibility to be used towards historical preservation.
A encampment has their own fundraising and they, they've managed thus far, or you know, whatever, they're doing that independently at this point. And then what was pulled out when we, the city separated the museum from the city budget, right? I don't, I wasn't present in that part, and I'm just wondering if we're are we looking to somehow ease back to somewhere that we were five to 10 years ago, or are we looking for a new model or for those that have been around, how are you going to? Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think you're asking a good question, Robin, and that's, that's one that staff has talked about as well, is looking at, you know, one of the things I've heard from, from some of the department heads is, you know, the ability to go back or at least, you know, strategically plan to bring back some of those levels of things that were cut. Now, obviously, again, that's gonna be a conversation of the funding has to be there in order to do it. So I think that's where, kind of like this kind of builds into it, is looking at, you know, specific ways of areas that were cut, that were history-based or historical preservation, or even just, you know, overall budget line items. That's one of the more, I think, internal staff ones we're gonna have to work on is to try to, as we go through the budget, look at, you know, areas that were cut and seeing how, just like you indicated, you know, when we get past some of our, you know, budgetary struggles that we, we, we know are gonna happen. How do we look at reincorporating some of those events or projects or, or things that were, you know, unfortunately caught due to, you know, budget restraints? How do we look at reincorporating some of those events or projects or things that were, you know, unfortunately caught due to, you know, budget restraints? Alright, okay, so then we'll go to the next kind of theme, which is, you know, thoughtful development and pros. So this again kind of focused a lot on the economic development, you know, values that we heard about. We're fostering relationships with existing and new businesses, attracting new businesses. So the three goals that really came out of here was, or initiatives were recruit a new business with fifty to seventy-five jobs each year. Increase the quality of housing and then continue to grow the tax base and be fiscally responsible. So the first one was kind of, you know, recruit new business with fifty to seventy jobs each year. So the three kind of right now focuses that we've kind of talked about are in twenty twenty one, determining the type of business that is a correct fit for Platteville, you know, workforce, utility needs, land needs, and continue the support of Pedic and their work with S L Ps or site selectors. So this is something that Barb and I kind of experienced on the last Pedic meeting, is really trying to get a true focus on, you know, what type of industry do we want and what type of industry don't we want? And that'll help kind of push the needle or push the focus to, you know, areas that when we're dealing with site selectors, we can already eliminate things that we know are just not going to fit in our community and really kind of hone in on those ones that we're trying to target. So one of the things we've talked about in twenty twenty two is a potential upgrade to the incubator and invest, which would invest in coworking space and in the industry park and also in the downtown area. So that's some of the focus that we can have. And then in twenty twenty three, you know, continuing to monitor workforce availability and housing availability such that there is housing for workers. So kind of goes hand in hand. If you want, you know, business to come here, you also have to have the space to house their employees. So we got to make sure that we're, you know, taking a conscious effort to make sure that we're watching both of those kind of parameters. So that's everything that we had so far with recruiting new businesses. Is there anything else anybody wanted to see in regards to that?
Is there going to be a focus, Adam, on like the 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 types of of jobs that are going to be brought in? You know, in terms of, are we looking at, you know, bringing a business in, they provide fifty to seventy-five jobs, but they're all minimum wage paying jobs? Like, is there going to be like a standard in terms of, you know, jobs that are going to support a a healthy quality of life? If that makes sense?
Yeah, so I think you're hitting it on the head, Jason. So one of the things that I think that plays directly into our marketing is we want to market that, hey, if you're going to bring in a job that's going to pay somebody twenty dollars or twenty plus dollars an hour, well, then your incentive is going to be higher. Whereas if it's not, we're not going to turn you away, but then you have to understand that either you have to substantially do something that's going to benefit the tax base, or we're not going to give you that type of an incentive. So I think that goes in hand in hand with the future marketing that we have to develop and with, you know, the potential of, you know, considering the fact that we closed a Tiff district, you know, we have to analyze if there's the ability for potentially new Tiff district to be created. Well, if we do that, those are all the parameters we need to think about is, you know, how market creative do we want to get with recruiting businesses? So that we target those, just like you said, we want to go after those big ones that are paying the big dollars. We're not going to turn away the small ones, but the big ones will be the focus.
Okay.
Adam, I would like to under the twenty twenty one. And where it says continue support of Pedic and their work with the site selectors to also actually call out Grant County Economic Development. Because I know Ron Brisboi, when you're talking to business of fifty to seventy-five jobs, he's got a big picture view, maybe a little broader, and I know they work together anyway, but just to call them out.
Yep.
Kathy, I think that's a good idea, especially since I just got a letter from Ron that said they would continue to support Platteville and economic element at the rate, at the investment, I guess, amount that it has cost us. I think now they haven't raised their investment amount for us for, I don't, I I don't know, five years, maybe ten years. So you're right, they do a great job for us. As long as you've mentioned that, you know, Grant County Economic Development meetings are actually open to anyone who wants to go. And right now, they're, they are on Zoom, so you don't even have to go anywhere to go. You could, now, when they take votes, only one person, the official person from Platteville can vote. But let me tell you, they don't take a whole lot of votes. I think Eileen and Adam would tell you there aren't a whole, whole lot of issues that get voted on. So maybe we'll have Adam start sending that Zoom link to everybody so that if you want to sit in sometime and just listen to what goes on, it is pretty interesting.
For sure. Alright, increased quality of housing. So what we have here is in the next three years, in twenty twenty one, you know, we've talked about some partnerships. We obviously already have one with the school district on looking at building a house, but really kind of developed diving into a more in-depth plan with potentially partnering with Southwest Tech and even the school district again to create a housing plan. Continuing implementation of the program funded through Tiff closure to improve, you know, single-family dwelling units. And before, we've had about two, but I think some more promotion of that could definitely see that program kind of take some wings. On twenty twenty two, potentially look at working with a private developer to establish a subdivision with some smaller homes slash smaller lots and common amenities. This has been kind of that conservation subdivision that's been talked about a little bit in various places. And then in twenty twenty three, kind of doing a deep dive into reviewing the current city limits with a plan to increase the size of the city. So kind of coming up with a kind of a land development plan that really targets, you know, I've done this in other municipalities where you talk to, again, we don't want to push anybody out or any anybody like that. But looking at, you know, potentially if there are farmers, you know, talking to them about, you know, later on down the road, entering into letters of intent or letters of agreement that when they're ready to, you know, no longer be a farmer, they sell it automatically to the city and then we have some long-term plans. Or if we know of a developer that's interested, you know, it's, we're kind of the intermediary. I've seen it done a couple of different ways. So I think that's something we can kind of look at in the future is kind of planning that out. So anything else you guys would like to see as far as increased quality of housing?
Adam, I don't know if I would add it in this this category or the next one. But I think partnerships are great when we say work with a private developer to establish a subdivision and then smaller homes. My concern is that the funding that is available often for those kinds of developments are also income restricted. And my concern is, as we've talked about before, and it's referred to below the the workforce housing. I'm not sure what that means to everyone. But definitely, I think the city at some point perhaps will have to invest money again in housing as we did once before. And so the current city limits with a planned increase the size of the city, that might mean purchasing land. It could also be infrastructure assistance to a developer. So I guess my concern is that, to me, it's the single-family home that we need. That's why I asked Will about ownership. And obviously, there's a need for certain age groups. They're looking, as Will said, looking to buy a home and are having difficulty finding the home that they want. Maybe they want to build a new home and they're not able to do that. So I was thinking of a task force, kind of like what Joe did already when he contacted all the realtors and told them about our rehabilitation program, where you can get a grant or a loan for the house built before nineteen fifty. So to have a task force where you contact the realtors, you contact the developer, you contact the lending institutions and say, what are we missing? Why are we not able to have people build homes in Platteville? Because I know that the surrounding communities are making that a priority. That was brought up in the last last Grant County Economic Development meeting. I know two communities who have now available like thirteen lots or seventeen lots. And my fear is that we keep waiting until twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. The other communities will probably be building on those lots and more power to them. I'm not trying to take it away.
Sure.
But I don't know that we can wait. I I really think it should be a priority that we talk about in twenty-one, how we can talk to someone maybe about purchasing land. I, you know, I know the city will be, it'd be difficult to find the funding. But I really honestly think that that's a critical thing. And and you said it before too, it's the chicken or the egg. You have the workforce, so they come here. You don't have the workforce, they don't come here.
Right.
I mean, that that's always an issue and having more young families in our community helps our school system greatly. So I think there's so many benefits to establishing single-family homes that are not income restricted because most of the funding we see from the federal and state is income restricted. And that makes it difficult for some of our young professionals to be able to to build a home. So is there a way that as a city, we can work with them, much as we're doing with the the improved before nineteen fifty homes?
Sure.
I don't know how you're going to put that in there, but that that would either go on quality of housing or grow tax base.
Yeah, well, I'll have, I'll pass that to Ben. He can figure that out.
I know we've talked in other meetings too, that there are already existing subdivisions that have been established, but the lots remain empty. Is there any way we can, you know, look into that, like why why lots are sitting in some of the already established subdivisions?
I think that would be a review of our current policies as a regard regarding the establishment of subdivisions. I have talked with a couple of landowners who tell me that perhaps it's too costly because if they have a subdivision, they need to put all the infrastructure in before they can sell a lot. Well, that's a whole lot of investment before you get anything back. So maybe another thing we need to do here is review our policies, our procedures, our expectations, our whatever it would be that govern how subdivisions are created and those kinds of, those kinds of things.
So Barbara, you're saying that like some some subdivisions, they have lots that are ready to be purchased, but then other ones haven't put lots up for sale because they don't meet certain, they haven't met all of like the stipulations? Is that kind of what you're saying?
I'm saying a a perfect example of a subdivision that has all the infrastructure in is the one out behind Menards and Walmart. So our, it's my understanding that our current, our current policy is before you can sell one lot, you have to get the sidewalk in, you have to have all the water in, you have to have all the sewer in. In other words, all the lots have to be ready to be built on before you can even sell a lot.
Okay, okay.
You know, that's a, that's a huge expense. Tiff, so maybe it, there was some help there because of the way that was. And and frankly, I think Eileen has experience on an earlier council and Ken probably too, when the city offered incentives to developers and perhaps assisted with some of that infrastructure development. I wasn't on the council and Eileen, maybe either you or Ken can speak to that.
No, you're right. We allocated a certain amount of funding and I don't want to say what it was because I don't want to give the wrong number. But we, we. Sorry?
We started with six hundred thousand dollars.
So we we will give a percentage to the developer depending on what he built. And the result of that, Jason, was that the second groups of homes that was built above the super eight, they were built and then almost everything behind the high school was built as a result of that. So, you know, it's difficult to come up with the money. So, but I do think that having some kind of program like that would be something we could discuss again to see if we could get, I mean, in Platteville this year, I looked at Joe's report, we've had two single-family homes built and one duplex. That's it.
Okay.
And we have a lot of apartments and nothing against the apartments. Some of them are lovely. Not everybody wants an apartment and, you know, finding a lot that's reasonably priced. Isaac could probably chip in here. I know there are a lot of homes for sale in Platteville right now, but obviously some people just want to build. We need to, we need to figure out how to make that available in my view.
So I think you hit on a whole bunch to add to number three there, Eileen. So again, again, that's continue to grow the tax base and be fiscally responsible. So as you said, looking to partner with private developer to result in new single-family home subdivisions. You know, there's some things I think we could look at, you know, when I was in Marshall, they did some tricks with, not tricks, but, you know, they did some things where if you were going to build a new home, normally you charge X amount of dollars to hook up into the water and sewer. They waived that, you know, it's a, so those are some things to look at as, you know, it's a short-term loss, but it's a long-term gain because you're gaining a, so those are some of the things I think, as you kind of, you and Barb kind of alluded to. You know, if we look at some of our policies, maybe for a two-year period, we advertise, you know what? If you build in Platteville, we're waiving your fees, you know, or something, or, you know, looking at different ways to cost benefit analysis. So I think those are some of the things that kind of all fall into this, you know, continue to update and follow our financial plan. You know, looking at borrowing no more than we retire on an annual basis or, you know, considering, you know, options that'll make sense. And then seek technology to help streamline work so that additional staff are not required. So looking at, you know, new financial software, different things that can help us with forecasting. Those are some of the things that, you know, we want to try to target in the next three years with that. Alright. Let's go to the last section. Quality, infrastructure, amenities and services. So this is one again where a lot of the kind of community values that we saw were, you know, we want to leverage our our current proximity to multimodal transportation in the future, support and improve existing roadways and capital assets. Try to provide a comprehensive range of, you know, public services of the best possible value and proposition. Again, invest in community facilities that both increase aesthetics of the city and demonstrate an optimal, you know, quality of life. So the four kind of categories that we came, that came up with were a community center for senior and youth, improving broadband services, museum upgrades and expand the city camera system. So number one for the community center for seniors and youth, some of the things to look at are creating the community center steering committee to define the community center in twenty twenty one. Developing in twenty twenty two, develop a business plan for the community center to include funding, plan to develop the center and ongoing plan to keep the center solvent. I think one of the other things that we're going to add to this as well, that Luke and I have talked about is, you know, kind of his, he's termed it kind of the room of requirements. So finding ways to provide that community center services before even having the community center. So looking at, you know, I've talked about when I was, you know, this is dating myself from my college years. But when I was in Green Bay, they had what were called parkies, where it was a summer job that you were assigned to a park. And basically you would play with kids, you do different type of events. They had carnivals, they had themes. So I think those are some of the things that Luke and I have kind of talked about is how do we plan, you know, until you get a community center? What are some of the things you can do to bring that community center here before we get one? And then, you know, long-term, as we said, in a perfect world, we'd love to see an opening of community center or some type of concept in twenty twenty three. Or again, you know, kind of creating some of these themes where if we may not have the community center yet, we've got that. Anything else anybody wants to see about the community center? I think that kind of hits most of the topics. Alright. Next one is improve broadband services. So over the next three years, some of the concepts that have been talked about are kind of developing an in-depth understanding of P C A, which is our Platteville network that we have, including what is and what is not possible throughout the community. You know, looking at additional, kind of to court some additional broadband vendors. So if that means, you know, Barb and I have to go on a road trip and we're going to go to Spectrum and every other A T and T company we can think of. You know, maybe we start doing that and just promoting, you know, the opportunity that, hey, if you came here, there's other options on the table. You know, again, working with legislatures and state government to create laws that give the public more options, you know, break up the current monopolies and territories. So I think again, just trying to get that information. And then in twenty twenty three, we'd like to have high-speed internet available to every home in the city at a reasonable cost. I think, you know, something we can look in here, improving broadband. I think, you know, something we could look in here, improving broadband services is Howard and I have been working with the Lion Energy on potential for what they call their smart poles, which may not be the broadband aspect, but it could increase the Wi-Fi ability within the city. So those are some of the things we could potentially could get creative on. So just kind of looking at that. Anything anybody else wants to see with improved broadband services?
Adam, um,
Yeah.
As far as broadband, with all the virtual learning and obviously Zoom meetings, I would like to see something added to twenty twenty-one other than just having a better understanding of PCAN. And, you know, if we're looking to at other broadband vendors, I think we need to make an effort. The, the legislature is already working, you're, you're hearing things come out of the legislature, both state and federal, about increasing broadband access. I'm afraid if we don't, if we wait till twenty twenty-two to look at that, we may be behind.
Sure.
Whatever, whatever pushes are going out there. So not necessarily, maybe to at least add having that, having that conversation with the legislators to find out what potential, I don't know if there's anything through the, the CARES Act that is going to happen, but if or has happened, what opportunities are there. But I'd like to see us at least have that, have a real serious conversation with the legislators in twenty twenty-one. If not before.
Yeah, I agree. The, the quicker we can move on this broadband thing, I think the better. Just because in this day and age, there's so much, there's so much that we do that is very dependent on having the, the quality, the high-quality reliable internet service.
Right. I agree with that, Adam. And I would add, I know that Howard Markline, Kathy had mentioned that at the last Grant County Economic Development Meeting, and I think September first, there was money that they were saying to apply for. My recollection of the last time the money was available was that it was more for the outside, the major city area, more rural areas. That doesn't mean though, that we can't maybe work with the rural areas and see if we could, you know, do the city and the rural area. But I don't know what the new money, how they're describing who would qualify for it, but I think it's definitely worth talking to him.
Last time there was money available, the money went to the broadband. It did not go, it did not necessarily go to areas for improvement. I don't know how else to say that, but companies could submit. And I don't actually think there was much follow-up on how service was improved. That's why I think it's really, it's really, I think legislators are getting a better understanding that broadband isn't available, but as little as two years ago, if you said something to legislators about there was inadequate broadband, you got a lot of pushback. A lot of pushback.
No, those are all good comments. So we will incorporate that into the update. Museum upgrades. So over the next three years, looking at various things to do, the museum in twenty twenty-one, look at the potential to go after grants and re-roof the Hammer Robbins Building, get historic designation at both the federal and state level. Twenty twenty-two, continue collection documentation and develop a list of needed items to complete the collection, welcome deed to mission items that don't fit. In twenty twenty-three, potentially looking at developing additional in-ground mine displays and hand-on displays. I think some other things to add potentially in twenty twenty-one with COVID specifically is looking at HVAC systems, because I think that's something that potentially could be added to that. And I think Eric is still on the call. Eric, anything else you want to add?
It would be a, simply a study to complete the long-term maintenance and preservation plan. That would include the HVAC study. So we know just exactly what we need to do to fully heat and cool the two primary museum buildings. That'd be a huge help. Thank you.
All right. Anything else anybody wants to add about the museum?
Would this be a place to put like the reconsideration of city funding for the museum?
Sure.
I don't know if this is a modest, that it's absent due to modesty, but I was thinking there was conversation about exploring some other variations of the museum displays, like more akin to children's museums or expanding into these conversations of how can we citywide increase programming that might touch on welcoming inclusivity, all of that. So I'm wondering, Eric, I wouldn't by any means tell you to insert these into these upgrade conversations, but is there anything just that you wish was there, but you didn't feel like it was, maybe it was too bold to put on that three-year list, but you still kind of are working on it?
Well, thank you for asking that, Robin. I do appreciate that. Yeah, it's true that I, you know, I don't want to be overly bold here. And the fact is that we're in the midst of like a massive interpretive plan right now. It's just not going to be done until probably December, January timeframe. But, you know, and the master plan is happening right now. And once that's done, that's really going to inform our multi-year plan and a capital campaign that could help to supplement whatever the city decides it's able to do. So I don't have all the answers now, but, you know, one thing that's really clear is that besides just like the basic things, like keeping the water out of the buildings and to have an upgraded mechanical systems to make sure all the floors are heated and cooled appropriately. Yeah, beyond that, we will have some really great things to offer in terms of a whole new approach that brings cultural history together with natural history and science and industry to be, you know, as relevant or more relevant than ever, you know, to our local school districts and for adults, you know, and all new partnerships, you know, across the region and a new level of prominence in the state as being the only museum in Wisconsin that focuses on this important aspect of, you know, early Badger history, the only mining history museum in the state. So we've got a lot going for us. And some, and two of the most prominent and important historic buildings in the city of Platteville, you know, it's a really great museum campus. It's worth the investment. It's worth the effort. And so, you know, some real obvious areas for improvement are that the upper level of the brick building, the Hammer Robbins Building, it's like arguably some of the most beautiful architectural spaces in the whole city. Someone pointed out the Main Street Program and the Walk Down Main, that great historical program. And if it weren't for COVID this year, we would have been singing the praises of Platteville's only really prominent architect, Henry Kleinhammer, who was the architect of that brick building. And the most beautiful spaces in Platteville are that upper level of our building, which is closed to the public. And so one of the things that we'll be doing with the master planning is finding a balance, a more careful balance between collection, storage spaces and visitor spaces that welcome people to see all new exhibits and engage with this building and the artifacts that we have in storage that nobody gets to see. And then the other natural place is going to be the renovation of the lower level of the Rock School. That great building started in eighteen sixty, has been closed to the public for a few years. So what's not on that three-year list is the renovation of those two floors, you know, and then expanding our exhibit areas in those places. So, yeah, there are things that we can read between the lines and maybe we should be more bold in putting that out there.
Maybe I was giving you a nudge, but yeah, I think it sometimes is scary to commit to. Maybe, I don't know if that's increased revenue or increased volume of traffic, but I think those are things that will go hand in hand when we're bringing in potential residents and how they can enjoy the community. So I think it deserves to be there. So thanks.
All right. And then our last one here is expand the city camera system. So in twenty twenty-one, this is a project that kind of got put on the back burner because of COVID in twenty twenty, but it's something that not only Doug, myself, Howard, and I think, you know, most of the staff have been looking at, you know, finding ways to interview experts on a city camera system with the goal of forming a plan to expand, you know, basically looking at ways that we can expand camera systems to not only downtown, but specifically with city buildings. So that's something we'd like to try to target in twenty twenty-one. And then twenty twenty-two, look at a variety of grant funding that is available through different mechanisms. You know, there are police grants you can go after to try to get some technology funds. You know, same thing with city municipalities, there's different grants we can try to go for. So and then looking at different ways to find, you know, kind of some internal experts on how to maintain the system and look at better ways of that. So those are some of the things we're looking at, you know, for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And then twenty twenty-three would probably be a continuation. But anybody have anything, any questions or anything they'd like to add with that?
I know I've wondered about police body cams. I don't know if that is a, a department requirement, or if it's something that we could look at too in terms of looking at cameras.
Doug, you want to take that one?
We already make extensive use of body cams and squad cams. So I mean, if you want to gift us with some cameras, we'll take them, but we're already headed well down that path.
Okay. Is it something that all officers use then?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Adam, I guess.
The end of our list, gang, so.
Adam, can I?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Cameras.
Yes.
Again, looking at the timeline. For, I think, I feel very strongly that, that the city camera system needs to be up and running to the, to the full max. So if we're looking at twenty twenty-one, I'd almost like to combine, move, move that seek and secure grant funding into twenty twenty-one.
Sure.
It doesn't mean that, that it has to be for the complete thing, but again, be aware of any type of grants that might be out there that we could start working on for that system.
Sure.
Other specific areas we're looking at in terms of city cameras, I would imagine the downtown area for sure. Are there other areas we're looking at?
Yeah, the downtown is definitely, I'll let Doug kind of elaborate on that. The downtown is one for sure. Doug, go ahead if there's anything else you want to.
One thing that we were hoping to take advantage of is the existing fiber with the PCAN. So that, where that's at in the city may dictate where some of the cameras would go. And there are specific intersections and areas of town that we'd like to cover. We, before COVID kind of derailed the project in this year, we were having meetings with city staff about locations for cameras and some of them would be for site security and things of that nature. Some would be for high-value police facility, or excuse me, city facilities. And some would be for, again, intersections and things of that nature.
Okay.
Luke has the thing he added to, you know, there's a staffing that's also looking at locations such as parks, intersections, the city dump site, you know, as well. I think Howard and I, when we met with the Lion Energy, that's another one of these smart pole additions that can be added as well as they can actually have a security camera that's on them. So as Doug and both kind of Luke indicated, we're looking at a variety of spots. All right. Well, that's, again, definitely appreciate all the, the feedback and the information. So the next step here is Ben and I are going to work on kind of taking all this information and work with Will on starting to put this into a kind of finalized draft document so that we can give it back to you to present. And then based on that, we'll either look at if we feel another meeting would be necessary, we can certainly do that. But otherwise, at the October sixth, kind of special meeting where we'll be talking about the CIP, we at least would be giving you the finalized version of kind of what we put together. And then kind of looking for feedback on if we feel we're ready to move it towards some form of an adoption stage. So again, appreciate all the, the feedback and the work that's been done by staff and by the council and everybody on this. So thank you, and we'll go from there.
Okay, folks, I believe that ends the work session. And according to my agenda, we have only one agenda item left. And that agenda item is adjournment. So I guess at this point, I'm looking for some type of motion.
I move to adjourn.
I heard of Kathy and Robin moved to adjourn. So Colette, here we go. We vote now.
Hey, Josh.
Yes.
Killian? Killian?
I don't think he's there.
No.
He's there.
He's muted.
He's got a mute.
Ken?
Okay, my question was unanswered. Are we going to get a hard copy by October sixth?
Yes. Because we will make sure you get a hard copy before October sixth.
Because about a quarter of your information was cut off.
Oh, okay. Yes, we will make sure that we get you a hard copy. Our plan is to get you a draft hopefully by the end of September, at least a week before the meeting, so you can review it.
Okay. How come I was cut off as far as voice?
Because you had yourself on mute somehow.
No, I didn't change it. So anyway, that's happened a second time.
Oh.
Okay, you're, you want to adjourn?
Yes, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Robin to adjourn. And Colette is now asked for your vote.
Okay, I'll vote to to adjourn.
Okay, Colette?
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Russ.
Nichols?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
And Art?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, thank you, everyone, and thank you, Ben and Adam, for leading us through that. It appears that Will has, has left to do his preparation. So folks, I guess the next time we are scheduled to meet as a group is September twenty-two. And so thank you all, and we'll see you then.
Have a good night.
Good night.